So it is 3:01 on April 27, 2020. This is the Lakeville Selectmen's Meeting, Lakeville Board of Selectmen Meeting, April 27, 2020. As the first agenda item, I will read what our new policy is for virtual meetings. In accordance with the Governor's Order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law C-30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the April 27, 2020 Public Meeting of the Board of Selectmen shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/laccam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.laccam.tv. Is anyone other than Lake Cam recording the meeting? All right. So present from Lakeville is myself, Lea Fabian, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Rich LaCamera, who is Lakeville Selectman, Maureen Candido, who is our Town Administrator, and Tracy Craig McGee, who is our Administrative Assistant. At the start, I would like to thank Lake Cam for all their help, continued help with our virtual meetings. So the second agenda item we have is, I didn't forget anything, right Tracy? Okay. So the next agenda...
We didn't read the script. The full speech?
We didn't read the script.
The long, long one?
Yeah, the long, long one.
Okay, let me find it. I don't have it from, I don't have it from today. Let me find it from last week. Hold on. Yeah, I'm just looking for it, so...
Tracy might have one, I can put it up on the screen for you.
I should have last week's right here, but when I need it.
Dom, you gotta mute your microphone.
Dom, I'm gonna mute your microphone for you. You can unmute yourself at any time.
Thank you.
Okay, so are we ready? As a preliminary matter, this is Lea Fabian, Chairman of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm that all members, staff, and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. So I think we'll introduce each member as we get to them instead of everybody up front. Is that, is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay. Good morning, this, well, good afternoon. This open meeting of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen in Lakeville, nope, just the Lakeville Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's Order suspends the requirement of the Open Meeting Law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with Agenda Materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lakeville Board of Selectmen is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that all attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting materials, all supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. Meeting Business Ground Rules. We are now turning to the first agenda item, which I already read, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the list of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking, and please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Did I get everything?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for that. I didn't think we had to do that. All right, so, agenda item number two. We have some selectmen announcements and some announcements. I did ask, I think Mike O'Brien is still with us? Is he still with us? Yes? Okay, so Mike, I'm just gonna read a couple, and then I'll just ask you for a quick update on your behalf. So miscellaneous announcements. First one, for residents eager for the transfer station to reopen to the public. As soon as we open it back up to receive recyclable materials and brush, we will post it on the town's website and Facebook page. We've answered a lot of these questions individually, so we figured we would just make an announcement that when recyclables are done, they're oftentimes not sorted correctly, so then our staff has to go in and sort them. Also, sometimes there's money collection that goes on with the brush per truckload when, when they get dropped off, so there's interactions there between the staff and people. Even if we give them masks and everything, we feel is not really appropriate social distancing, so we, as soon as we decide that we can move forward with those two things, we will let everybody know. Next announcement, the town clerk is urging residents to return the local census. The census can be mailed back to the town clerk or dropped off in the Dropbox that has been set up in the front of Town Hall. It's very important that we have accurate local census numbers, so if you have not returned yours yet, please do. Right in the front of Town Hall, for anyone who doesn't know, the vestibule is set up, there's a Dropbox there. I believe you can drop it in the mail. Plenty of ways to get that back. I know we've, we should all be seeing those commercials everywhere about, please get your local census back. Next announcement, the Animal Control Officer would like to remind residents that the town has a leash law and that all dogs must be leashed when not on your property. While Betty's Neck seems like a great place to let your dog run free, the leash law applies there also. Animal Control will be patrolling Betty's Neck and writing citations for violation of the leash law. Please keep your dog on a leash while visiting Betty's Neck. Can't stress enough that everyone says their dog is, you know, calm, whatever, but you never know what's gonna happen when you come up against, you know, a group of people, another family that may have other dogs, so please, please, please keep your dogs on a leash. I do know that the Animal Control Officer has been working with the Chief of Police on exactly what kind of citations are allowed, and they will be out there patrolling.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
A little note on that, the Animal Control Officer is installing signs on the bog roads leading into Betty's Neck. The property owners are in favor of that, and they do not want dogs running loose on their bog roads either.
Okay, duly noted. For anyone who thinks it's okay to let them run on the bogs, it is not okay to take, we have a leash law. It is not okay to let your dogs run free. We all wish we could do it, but we're having lots of issues. So right now, I have, the town would, would like Lakeville residents to know that if you are in need of food assistance, the St. Vincent de Paul Food Pantry located at 53 Oak Street in Middleborough can help Lakeville residents. A family of four can have earnings up to $55,000 a year and still be eligible for assistance. Also, they have a program for residents who are unable to leave their homes where a volunteer can shop at the food pantry for them. For information, you can call the food pantry at 508-947-1717, or visit their Facebook page. Again, it's St. Vincent de Paul Food Pantry. They are located at 53 Oak Street in Middleborough. Really nice folks there. They, their, their purpose in life is just to help, and that's where any Lakeville residents who may need some help right now can go. Again, the phone number is 508-947-1717, or St. Vincent de Paul Food Pantry Facebook page. So right now, before I go to Mike, I'm gonna ask Rich if he has any other announcements he would like to share.
No, I'm all set, Madam Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Maureen, anything?
Just one announcement on Triple E. If everyone remembers, a couple weeks ago, I had mentioned how I was writing to the Governor, and we involved our state rep and our state senator in our hopes to get all swamps sprayed early for Triple E on the Governor's desk, and he pushed it through, and we're gonna see if it actually goes through, is an act to mitigate arbovirus in the Commonwealth. So we are trying to actively make sure that we do not leave the coronavirus quarantine only to be quarantined again because of Triple E mosquitoes, so I'll update the town once I get another update on where this is.
Okay, thank you for that, cuz I know we've had a few people reach out and say, you know, exactly the same thing as anyone, you know, did we forget about the Triple E?
Absolutely not.
We have not.
Roadblocks, but we're, we're trying to fight our way through it.
Okay, we have not. Tracy, anything else from you?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay. Mike, are you with us? Chief O'Brien?
I'm here, thank you.
I apologize for calling you Mike. I know you're chief, but we talk so much.
You can call me Mike whenever you want, it's no big deal.
Okay, well, Chief O'Brien, do you have an announcement or any kind of information you can give us right now that you feel the town residents should know?
Well, we're still seeing an increase in the number of COVID-19 cases. Our workload related to those cases is remaining consistent. We don't have, we don't have a lot of these calls that come in, but we, you know, maybe one or two a day, and our mindset is to treat everything that could be like COVID-19 or could be COVID-19, we treat it as if it is. And so we wear our PPE, and we come in with our masks and gowns, and it's unsettling to some people, but we're just trying to be safe, and we try and calm them down and explain what we're up to. As far as the, our situation, it's much improved, and that's come with the efficiency of MEMA. MEMAs really kind of created some regional dispensing points. Our closest one is in Bridgewater, and so it's, the supply chain has become more responsive and more flexible, so if I have a need right now, I can put an email out in or request, and I can pretty much feel good about the fact that the gear will show up tomorrow, or I can go pick up the gear tomorrow. So that wasn't the case in the beginning, and we didn't know when our protective equipment was arriving. And on the other side of things, other side of things is I can still order gear. A lot of the vendors that we've dealt with in the past have suddenly have gear in stock for us to buy from them, another good sign. So for us, it's now, it's about being sustainable. Our, our staff is operating at a, you know, at elevated state. They're not taking leave, they're, they're, you know, very committed and locked down to this. They don't, they don't really have anywhere to go because of lockdown. So, but we know that these, these COVID-19 cases are gonna be something we're likely gonna deal with over the next year or so, hopefully not with the, the frequency that we are now. And so we have to, we have to figure out a system that's manageable, and that's what we're working on right now, is the, the next phase, the next plan, and, and how to keep our, our department and our town protected and purchase equipment and, and make that sustainable as well, and make it affordable. So one of the things that's kind of risen is some grant opportunities from the federal government, and we're, we've looked at those grant opportunities, and there's a definite advantage to going to a regional type grant program. So we're in discussion with the neighboring fire chiefs in the, in both Bristol and Plymouth County, and trying to get a regional grant, actually develop a cash, a PPE cash for, for the neighboring departments, and feel pretty confident that if we, if we're able to, to coordinate our efforts, we'll be able to successfully get some grant funding into, into our area. That's what's going on here.
I just, because the Governor last week spoke with all the administrators of some of the big Boston hospitals saying, and I know you, you mentioned this really early on, that a lot of your folks who need ambulance services regularly, that those numbers were down because people were afraid to go to the hospitals. You could just reiterate again to us, Morton Hospital still is just ICU is for COVID-19, but the rest of the hospital is still open to all patients, correct?
It's, it is correct, and thanks for bringing that up. There is an apprehension among our, our community to go to the hospital out of a fear of contracting or being exposed to the virus. And today alone, we've had, we responded to three scenes where the patient were just, they were seeking medical care and refused to transport to the hospital, so three times just today. One of the things is if you're injured or you're sick, your situation's not gonna get better by, by neglecting, neglecting your situation. Putting it off is just gonna make your situation worse, and as much as we, we try and talk them into going, and people are definitely nervous. The hospitals are aware of this, and they're taking steps to put people's mind at ease that, that, you know, they're, they're handling COVID-19, they're getting better at handling COVID-19 situations, so they're isolating these people, they're keeping their facilities cleaner, and they have, they have their processes locked down. So it's, if you had to, if you had to summarize what I'm trying to say, if you had to look at the, the cost, the cost and benefit of, of, the cost of not taking care of your, your illness or your issue is gonna far outweigh potential exposure to COVID-19. So you're trying to protect yourself, and in the long run, you're gonna cause even more harm to yourself by not going to the hospital. It's definitely a big problem that we're dealing with right now.
So, I mean, honestly, if you feel like you need an ambulance, first of all, you folks are gonna get there in your PPE, and of course, it goes according to symptoms, whatever, you know, the symptoms are that they report in when they call in for, you know, for the ambulance too. Like if someone's saying, I think I'm having a heart attack, you know, I mean, it might be a little bit different than if someone says, I think I have COVID-19, but I know that you're still putting on all your PPE, and people should feel comfortable calling the ambulance if they really feel like they need help.
What they, what they have to see is that after every call, our ambulances are disinfected, and every morning, they get disinfected. And if you twisted your ankle or broke your ankle right now, you, you'd see a bunch of people with masks and gloves and eye protection show up in front of you, and that's to protect you as, as much to protect us. We, you know, we screen our firefighters, but in the outside chance that one of them has, has, has the virus, now you're being protected from that exposure as well. So we're really taking a lot of, we have the equipment to protect people, and we're gonna do our best to protect them. I would say our ambulances are probably one of the cleanest places in town right now.
Okay, I, I believe it, I do. All right. Rich, do you have anything to ask Mike or need any clarification on anything?
I'm okay, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay.
I had unmute myself.
That's okay, all right.
In the loop, um, when these, because there is, there is some talk among all the fire chiefs into entering a regional grant, the scoring, our chances of scoring well in those, those grant programs increases with the, with the regional system, and I need authorization from the selectmen to do, to enter into those agreements.
Okay, so we, I think we're gonna be meeting pretty regularly as long as we're doing these virtuals, so we can get you on an agenda.
Cool.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Thank you very much, and thank everyone for everything they're doing. Much appreciated. Next agenda item is number three, discuss scheduling Board of Selectmen meeting dates for May and June. So, uh, let's see here. Right now, our next scheduled would be May 4, I believe, and then we have possibly May 18, June 1, June 15, June 29.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I believe that we should meet every, every week now, and then we can cancel if we have to, but there's a lot of things that need to be done between now and the 1st of June.
Yeah, I, I agree. Plus, I think that sometimes these virtual meetings take a little bit longer than in person, so I'd like to sort of keep. So then, what we have is today's the 27th, we have the 4th, then in between that is the 11th, then we have the 18th, the 25th is probably Memorial Day weekend, so, and then after that would be June 1. I mean, Rich, do you feel comfortable just going, that's one, two, three, four meetings?
For now, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to go out that far, and then we can take them, you know, we don't know what the Governor's gonna do or say about in-person meetings or not, so let's not overschedule, but I don't wanna underschedule, so, okay, so, May 4, May 11, May 18, June 1. All right.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
The only reason I brought you guys out that long is because I'm trying to develop the timeline for the annual and the special town meetings.
Yep.
Without knowing when you guys are gonna be meeting in June, it's a little difficult for me to figure out where we're gonna fit everything in. I, I have you down right now to do warrant review on June 15, but I was thinking that you'd wanna wait till the 17th so the board could reorganize after the election, but I know Richard wanted to get things done early, so that's kind of why I'm throwing these dates out there, to have you guys look at the meeting schedule that I sent you versus the timeline and see, I don't know how early you wanna do things.
So it's, um, pretty much just that June 15 meeting, right?
Well, I don't know, do you wanna, well, do you wanna wait that long to do warrant review, or do you wanna do warrant review earlier in the schedule?
Madam Chair, I know we didn't want to wait that long. A week before the annual town meeting is, is pretty tough on the town administrator and Tracy and the office, you know, to get everything all together and copied and so forth, so we might wanna say that we are gonna meet on June 1, June 8, and June 15 at this point based upon, you know, Tracy's proposed schedule here.
And then we do a quick June 17 meeting to reorg?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Okay.
That's just my, you know...
Yeah, I mean, I definitely, let's, let's put in the, the 8th, and then I think we, I don't know if we wanna do the 15th or the 17th, I don't know. I, I would like to reorganize or at least have the third selectman on before the warrant review, but...
I don't see how you can do that.
Yeah, that's cutting it super close, so...
And Tracy, you'll have to push up the legal ad and the posting?
Yeah. Okay.
Well, the legal ad and the posting, I mean, they're gonna be June 4, so that would be before warrant review.
Yeah.
And all the legal ad says is just look at the website for the warrant, so I'll be putting that up earlier, you know, but this is just the legal ad saying, here's where you find it, instead of us having to publish the entire ad.
Yeah, so, so what we're saying is to do warrant review June 1 or June 8?
June 8.
Okay.
I don't think we'd be ready for June 1.
No, that seems a bit, especially with this whole format.
Right.
And I mean, the only, the thing is, is for the warrant review, I don't know how we get public input, and I know last year, there was a lot of public input at the warrant review, so, but we can aim for June 8. I'm fine with that, and then we can have June 15 or the 17th. I guess we can decide that one, but we can just date them all the way through June 8, that's fine. All right, everyone good?
Are we gonna talk about Tracy's schedule here, or is that later?
Nope, we can talk about that.
Okay. As far as the schedule is concerned, we need to get the, do we have the updated warrant yet?
Not yet. Tracy's working on it.
But I'm working on it.
So everything that you saw the other week has already actually gone by council, so council has reviewed all the other items, so the only thing council hasn't reviewed is the MEMA, the FEMA maps and the, and the technology for, for the schools.
And what about the treasurer's article?
Already went through.
So you're gonna update that already? Cuz it needs to be changed.
Yep, it's, it should be in the warrant, it is changed to the, to the...
Not the one we gave, they gave us at the last meeting, no, it wasn't updated.
I'll take a look.
Yeah, okay. So then, I guess at the next meeting, if town council has reviewed the proposed warrant that we currently have, then on the May 4 meeting, we can vote on the articles, I guess.
That's what I have for schedule, the articles and the final warrant on May 4.
Okay, that's fine. As far as the special town meeting is concerned, we're gonna have to change the warrant review up there though, Trace.
Yeah.
The special town meeting, we can call, schedule the special town meeting on the 4th, and it's only a week, we're gonna leave it open, huh?
I didn't know how long you wanted to leave the special open for, that's how...
Usually, it's not usually just a week, right?
Yeah, it's usually at least a couple of weeks anyway, so we might wanna change that to the 18th, and then we can vote on the articles on the 18th. We're actually gonna meet on the, what was that date?
11th?
11.
Yeah.
But if we leave it open to the 18th, we can't vote on them on the 11th.
Right, so, yeah, that's a problem.
Does it have to be two full weeks? Can't we just leave it open till May 17?
Can we, can we open the special time meeting now, Tracy? can't we open the special time meeting now, Tracy?
Sure.
And then close it on the 4th, excuse me?
The 11th.
On the 11th, and that will give you two full weeks. Is that okay?
You have to do it under new business and then you guys would have to ratify the vote at your next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, we can do that.
We can do that, all righty.
Okay, so you want to open it today and close it on May 11th?
Correct.
Tracy, it want to be May 11th or does it want to be the 10th?
I think it's for the 11th.
Yeah, I think it needs.
What is May 11th?
May 11th.
It's on the Monday.
Monday, so it would be the Friday before to close it? Because we don't want to close it and then have the meeting halfway through the day, right? So Friday, May 8th?
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
So remind us to vote on that, okay?
Yep. Going back to the meetings, I know there was question about time. I automatically assumed we were going to keep the afternoon. I think, Rich, you thought we were going to go later. Do you want to go later in the day, Rich, now that we know what we're doing with all the virtual stuff here?
Madam Chair, can I completely interrupt you?
Absolutely.
It works out better for the other boards and committees if we have it at a different time than we normally do. We've run into a problem where we can't livestream it on the same channel. So if we have an earlier meeting, it frees up another board to have a meeting later at night. So I just wanted that to be part of the consideration of whatever we do going forward.
Okay.
Those other boards don't meet on Monday night. But I I don't have a problem with it, and the reason why is because nobody can participate in our meeting anyways.
Right.
So it's a matter of doing this and then immediately that evening, it's on Lake Cam. Anyway, so it's really not a big deal.
So I I mean, 3 o'clock works. Yeah, you know, I mean, 3 o'clock works for warrant review. Maybe we can, if we are going to go to a somewhat in-person version at that point, I don't even know what's going to happen. But anyways, then maybe we can work on the time. But for now, I think we can, I'm all right with 3 o'clock, I'm okay with 4 o'clock, I'm okay with 5 o'clock, whatever.
Madam Chair, while we're talking about the meeting schedule, we do need to do a quick five-minute meeting with the Lakeville members of the Regional School Committee to reappoint Gary Mansfield to the Old Colony School Committee. I have reached out to the members and they're okay with an afternoon meeting around any time after 3 o'clock.
Okay.
So, I mean, we do have to just do something real quick.
Yep, okay.
Get their weight for May 4th?
I can check with the town clerk, but his term expires May 1st.
Wow. A few days isn't going to make a difference.
Yeah, I I mean, I'm available all week, I'm going nowhere, so if we need to put something together this week, we can do that, that's fine, you know.
All right, I'll check with them to see if they're available on May 4th.
Okay. All right, or, I mean, honestly, if we have to do it, you know, we'll we'll just do it this week, I guess. Okay. So we actually did some of number four anyways, review the draft timeline for annual town meeting, special town meeting. Are we all set with everything for that now? Do we want to actually vote in the day? Because I don't think we've actually voted the day in, correct?
Yeah, I, my recommendation is that we know we want to do it on the 22nd, okay? If you vote, if you vote in the day now, you can't have the meeting, then that's going to present a problem. Once we vote the meeting in with the warrant article, the warrant article, then we're stuck. And it's difficult to move, the town moderator would have to call the meeting in in the high school and ask anybody who wants to, any objection to it and then postpone it to a later date. So I think we ought to wait at least till next week to see what happens, because I'm sure you, I don't know if you watched the governor's press conference today, but he wasn't getting too excited about ending this thing on May 4th. So that would be my recommendation.
I was, I was hoping last week when he mentioned, you know, touched on it, that he was going to say for sure, one way or the other. But I'm hoping by the end of the week, we know what the intention is going to be. But, okay, so we'll just, we'll postpone the vote, but we will plan for June 22nd. And we will vote that in soon. Okay. Rich, if you don't mind, would you like to take over number five? The review request from Twisted Growers to amend the current host community agreement to include an adult-use retail facility. Do you mind doing that for me?
No, I guess, I guess the first thing we should do is everybody that's
There, yep.
Everybody that's on the call, if you could please unmute yourself and introduce yourself to the board, please.
Sure, I'll go first. My name is Brian Salisbury. I'm an attorney and I represent Twisted Growers.
Dennis Carjanis, co-owner of Twisted Growers.
Dominic DiMartino, co-owner of Twisted Growers.
Jamie Bissonette, civil engineer from Zenith Consulting Engineers.
Okay.
I am Mitch Suzanne, head of security
Oh, sorry.
for Twisted Growers.
We forgot you.
That's okay, no problem.
All right, so I I guess the the objective of the meeting is to talk about, you know, where you are now and where you want to go. I know that there is an existing agreement, you know, that between the town, host agreement between the town and Twisted Growers. And I want to make sure that I'm saying this correctly, that the host agreement says that you can cultivate and that you can also be a retailer. So that's the way the existing contract reads, is that correct?
I I believe that is, let me just point out. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And so you have got, you have received a special permit for the town for that facility, which is 415 Millennium Circle.
That's correct.
That's correct, okay.
I'm sorry, I lost you guys there for a minute. Did you say you received a special permit?
We did.
So I have that still listed as being drafted and that it's not recorded yet for the special permit, is that accurate?
We received, the special permit was allowed. We haven't recorded it with the Registry of Deeds yet because we haven't been able to get a physical copy stamped because of the.
Got it, so it's not, it has not gone to the Registry of Deeds yet?
Right.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Yep.
Okay. So as far as that facility is concerned, where are you with the construction and renovation of that facility now?
Well, I'll I'll let Dominic DiMartino field that question.
Okay.
So at the moment, we have not begun construction due to, we're waiting for the CCC to come back and and give us our provisional license.
Okay, so there's been no work, no work been done there at all?
At the moment, no.
Okay, so what is the plan to construct and modify that facility timeframe?
Well, we have a full set of plans that have been completed with an architect and an engineer. Really, it's just a matter of turning it into the town now that we have, we have, have we had the meeting, had the special permit. And then from that point, I've hired local Massachusetts contractors to do all the work. And in our contract, they can, from the time that we allowed them to start, nine months, they can turn it over for, to to get a CO from the, from the town of Lakeville.
Okay, so when do you expect the approval from the cannabis?
We had some comments from the CCC that they wanted some clarification. And my understanding is that we did send back the the information that they required. And we're hopeful that in the next 30 to 60 days, that we we have something back from the CCC.
Okay.
What happened on that front is that priority applicants, in the law, priority applicants are given preferential treatment. There were many priority applicants that submitted CCC applications that were being reviewed a lot at the time that we submitted our application, and that delayed the processing. And then now with the COVID-related quarantine, that's also slowed the process down.
Okay.
Can I just make one point? I misspoke, the community host agreement does not currently permit retail. It allows for cultivation and processing.
The request is to add retail.
Correct.
But the request will be either to add it to the existing host agreement or to the separate new location, correct? Okay, so we have to determine whether, what's the right way to do that? And I can't answer that question right now, and I don't think you can either, Brian. You and I have had a conversation about this last week. So, okay, so we'll put that aside for one second. Just so the board members and the town administrator, you know, we're new, okay? The cultivation facility, which was, I guess, about 6,500,000, 65,000 square feet. How, what was the business plan to to generate the number of pounds for that facility? Does anybody have that?
So can I speak real quick? So there's two buildings, we have a pilot program that's about a 24,000 square foot building, and then another building that would bring us to that number that you had just said. All of our procedures are kind of stalled, waiting for the CCC to get back to us, which is not really happening as fast as we'd like, which, you know, everybody's operating kind of in a skeleton crew. So it's really not in any of our control or power, we can't change any of that.
Right, but what I'm saying is that you have a facility, is it going to be 24,000 or 65,000?
Yeah, the pilot program is 24,000 square feet. And out of that building, it should start producing about 5,080 pounds a year annually.
Okay. And is there expansion for the balance of the building or is that?
No, but as that building begins to get more dialed in, it it should inflate itself to to about double that, to almost, almost 10,000 pounds a year.
But there's no plan for that in the short term?
Uh, no, because you got to get in there, you got to get it dialed in. Obviously, every, every grow is going to have a little bit of a twist to it.
Okay, all right, so the request is that, you know, you want to open this retail facility at 200 Millennium Circle, which is pretty close by to where the existing building is. So what would be the plan for that building retail? I mind, I get that here, I I don't know if it's broken up by pounds, but it's broken up by dollars. It's 18 and a half million dollars a year from what I see in this plan?
Yeah, when it's fully functional, yes, fully operational, yeah.
Okay. So are all of the pounds that are going to be generated at 415 Millennium going to be used at this new retail facility?
No, we anticipate using about half. And every, you know, what what I, what I sent in the email back that I was hoping everybody would grasp is, you know, yes, they lose the 25, which comes out to, on year one, about 131,000 in taxable income for the town. But you pick it up because you're now not selling it at a wholesale level, you're selling it at a retail level. And that increases the net net back to the town by over 300% as far as taxable revenue.
So by opening the retail, if you didn't open the retail, you're saying we would have got another $131,000 more?
Yeah, so like, let's say if we sold, if we sold all the pounds out of Lakeville on year one, that would equate to a bill, a tax bill to the town of Lakeville for $131,000, right? But if we had sent them all to the dispensary and sold them, not even all, we're talking about 50%, that would equate a $419,000 tax bill to the town of Lakeville. So instead of, so doing it, you know, the regular way made you guys 131,000, being able to give it to the dispensary would make you about 419,000. And that's not counting into effect, you know, the fact that we'd be hiring locals, you know, getting more foot traffic to a pretty much dying industrial park and and uplifting that industrial park that's in Lakeville, it's probably needs some uplifting out of anywhere's in Lakeville.
Rich, do you mind if I ask a question? Just so that I'm, I get this straight, so you said you're going to be growing about 5,000 pounds a year?
Yeah, roughly, roughly in year one, yes.
And half of that is going to be sold?
We're hoping that half of it can be sold through the dispensary.
Okay, and the other half is going to be sold as wholesale?
Yeah, it would be sold as wholesale or to other dispensaries around the state.
Okay, all right, thanks, Rich.
Hey, just excuse me, I got to get my folder here, somewhere on my table here.
I mean, I I am new to a lot of this marijuana stuff. I know soon we got on the board and then we put in a freeze. So I I'm still trying to get used to all the terms here. So when you're saying dispensary, though, you are meaning, I still equate dispensary to medical-only marijuana? I guess that's incorrect on my part, it basically means any retail?
Well, yeah, it's a dispensary that's selling marijuana, some will be medical, some will be medicinal, some will be a combination of both.
Okay.
Okay. I I guess, hey, Brian, I I'm a little confused. I'm looking at the Twisted Growers agreement right now, the host agreement. And it says, the company shall pay annually a community impact fee of amount equal to 3% of the gross sales for marijuana and marijuana product sales at the facility. So doesn't that mean that the existing agreement talks about retail?
I I noticed that that earlier today in preparing for the meeting, that it does reference obliquely sales at the facility. It's inconsistent with the first part of the agreement, the first whereas. The first where has, whereas on page one where it says to locate a licensed recreational marijuana establishment cultivating, processing, product manufacturing. So I think that this was obliquely put in. That's, we'd be happy to consider that to be approval. I don't believe that was the intention at the time.
Okay, so you, I guess it's Dennis, maybe, Dennis, whoever, you had no intention on selling retail out of there?
No, when when we had first spoke to the town, we we indicated all of our intentions were to start a pilot program in the 24,000, roll it out into the bigger building to eventually have the 100,000 square feet of canopy space that the state of Massachusetts allows, and doing a retail in there. And we had told that whole plan from day one, we've never deviated from that, we just didn't know that we had to. I thought when you went to the CCC, it was a bundle and you got all three of the licenses at once, because that was the first process that we had gone through. I didn't realize, we didn't realize till we got to the CCC that that wasn't. So that's why we're coming back for the amendment. But all of the old town council, we had spoke to them about that and that, it's been our plan since day one.
So I assume this host agreement, Brian, has been given to the cannabis. Right?
Correct.
So aren't they approving your license based on this host agreement?
In part, they ask for a copy that you have a host agreement and that you provide a signed and executed agreement to them.
But this says both retail and cultivation, right? I guess I'm confused, I'm sorry.
I think, I think the purpose, so just a bit of background on the, on this particular agreement. It was presented as a take it or leave it. We had received the proposal from the town. We made some edits to the agreement. And then all of the edits that we made to the agreement was rejected. And said it's basically, this is the way uh the agreement reads. Which is fine, we were happy to, we were happy to enter into host agreement with the town at the time. I think the purpose of paragraph one on page two, A1, is to catch when they turn, when they define the term gross sales. I think the town was looking to make sure they got everything. It would just in a very expansive definition of gross sales so that there'd be no confusion about what gross sales are. So I don't, I don't necessarily believe that A1 uh expressly authorizes retail sales, but it would certainly encompass it within the agreement. So that's why we think that amending the agreement wouldn't be uh much of a stretch for either for us or for the for the town.
Okay, the the Maureen, I don't know if you have the special permit. There was a special permit only approved for cultivation?
Um, I don't have it in front of me. I asked Kathy Murray for it, but.
I guess Brian maybe can answer that question, Brian, do you know?
Yeah, it was it was permitted for a cultivation facility.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just cultivation?
I believe that's true. I can look it up, but I believe that's that's what we applied.
So do you have the language that our lawyers uh worked up on that? Because I haven't got that back yet. When you're saying just cultivation, you're you're not saying the processing or the product manufacturing that is referenced in the HCA.
So I. Let me uh let me pull that up.
That processing and manufacturing should all be included in that host agreement because we we did give them a detailed layout about the processing room and which process, and we even had a meeting at one point in which we went over which processing we were going to use, whether it be ethanol, CO2, or anything in between.
Sure, but he just mentioned that the special permit only had the cultivation language, so I want to make sure that it's.
I mean, it does say, and what I I don't know if this is the agreement I have, it says cultivation, processing, and product manufacturing of recreational marijuana.
Yeah, that's on the HCA and that's my breakdown on my uh on my cheat sheet of of.
And actually, my 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 signature is on this, but this was literally the first day I was a selectman, so I really didn't have a whole lot of inputs or uh time to study.
Yeah, the HCA seems to spell out the cultivation, processing, and manufacturing. I just didn't know the special permit because I haven't find a language because it hasn't been submitted yet.
Okay, um I I guess it's obvious that, you know, there's there's some questions here on both sides that need to be straightened out to make sure that whatever we're doing, we cut it right. Um, so I guess what you guys should do now is you wanted to present, you know, to us, we have your proposal for your recreational facility. So did you, somebody want to give an overview? And then we could talk about the specifics having to do with this facility or?
Sure. When you say an overview, what do you mean?
Well, you gave us a document here that, you know, talks about your business plan and what what you're trying to do and so forth and so on. I know specifically that you wanted to talk about. The problem with these calls. I know you wanted to talk about the security plan, the security site plan and and what was the other thing? I think there was something else you wanted to talk.
Well, we brought we brought Mitch here if you wanted to talk about a security plan. You know, we brought Brian as our attorney. I could talk about obviously anything about the materials that would be on site. Jamie could probably speak to the parking, which would be, you know, is one of the things that we see that's an issue for dispensaries. So I don't, whichever one you want to touch on first.
It's up to you. You can, whatever one you prefer, you know.
All right, Jamie, do you want to go to Jamie then for maybe the parking to make sure that we'd have adequate parking?
Sure.
Sure.
Um, I'm gonna share the screen and show you the existing site plan. All right, so um the the site presently has has a very large industrial sized building, as you can see, and then the shaded area is presently paved. Numerous spots and in the back, there's a tremendous amount of area for tractor trailers or potential parking. So what we would be doing on this, obviously, we'd need site plan review through planning board. And and we'd want to speak with the building inspector just to confirm the parking designation that he's he would see fits the best here. In doing that, we would show parking, but we have a tremendous amount of existing paved area already there. So it'd just be a matter of just line striping essentially to provide the parking for this site. May need a couple of improvements for ADA access in the front and the side, but overall, I think it'd be very minimal as far as changes besides uh besides painting and marking.
And where is the entrance to the building, Jamie?
Uh, it's gonna actually be in the front. I don't, can you see my cursor on the screen?
I can.
All right, I they have an entrance over here, I believe, and Dominic, tell me if I'm wrong, but isn't there also also?
So on the proposed, the proposed entrance is gonna be up on the right hand side, a little up, bring your, right there, stop, right there. That's the proposed entrance and then right before that's the proposed exit because we do have a site plan. If you look at the package that was provided to you on March sixth, it it does have a layout inside that package and we can talk about that in this call as well.
I can bring that up as well if you'd like.
That'd be great, Jamie, if you can.
Let me just get to the right page and that'll be right up. Here we go. All right, um, all right, so in this view, in this view, this, so the top of the the top of the sheet would be the side of the building that Dom was just referring to. This would, this is the in the inlet here and which they would, customers would move around the building. Um, I believe this is the entrance for online pickup orders, correct?
Yes.
And this would be for customers, regular customers that don't already have their online orders processed. And it's basically a flow through to get to this, the area where you can make your purchase and then everybody funnels out and exits in the in the same area. So presently, I believe the entrance is in the front. Um, you're gonna be moving it over to the side.
No, again, the the current entrance is one of those doors, whether it's the inner.
Oh, all right.
That is currently where it is now as well.
Okay, Jamie, so then if the entrance is over there, then the parking is going to be to this left side of the building?
It would be to the left. There would be some employee parking out into the front. And we would probably even have to provide some parking to the rear as well.
Okay, but the customers are gonna go from the back of the building to the side of the building?
That's correct.
Not necessarily. There's probably thirty, there's probably, there's probably thirty parking spaces in the front of the building. We're gonna utilize, you know, whatever parking we can in the front and then whatever else we may need, we'll give, you know, some in the rear and the side where the entrance and exit is, but there certainly is parking in the front we're gonna be utilizing.
Yeah, front and the side. And then any overflow would be to the rear.
Yes, exactly.
So how do they get out of there, Jamie?
As far as the building?
Yeah.
The door right here next to, next to the entrance?
The parking, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me pull up that other plan. So over in here, they had this, this entire area over in here is a curb, is all curb cut right up to the road, pavement right up to the edge. And then there's also an entrance exit right here as well. So you can either come out onto Millennium this way or you could exit out onto Millennium this way.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, I'm all set with that.
The security proposal, I guess, I assume that this has not been provided to the police chief or the fire chief at this point?
So we'll let Mitch, you wanna feel that question? Gonna unmute yourself, Mitch.
Yeah, so I have, I have submitted, so this is not the only group I'm working with in Lakeville. This is a second group. So I've been in contact with the chief of police and the fire chief previously. I have sent them for this group, I have sent email with the um security plan. The police chief has uh referenced to me that as long as I follow CCC guidelines, level of security that he is, he is fine with that. Chief Perkins is fine with that. Well, as we get closer to opening, we will meet so that, you know, they, you can see the, you know, the security layout and that. I'll be working, obviously, the fire department will be working with the construction of the of the site and everything. And as we get closer to um open, I'll work with the fire chief so that knock boxes are in place, the access cards required to get into the dispensary is is appropriate. And do a walkthrough with either departments if they want to be, if they want to have a walkthrough. Security here is uh is different than cultivation sites. Obviously, the public is invited. We will follow CCC security rules, regulations. For recreational, you need a active license that will be checked by Twisted Growers employees. Security will be on site, a minimum of two guards throughout the day as long as employees, the public is there, there will be security. One person will be watching cameras and another one would be a rover type where that person in and out of the building, checking the parking lot, making sure that there is no smoking, no eating of edibles on the property, no loitering. So, you know, people will be asked to, if they start to hang there, they're gonna be asked to move on. We will also, there'll be cameras twenty four seven. They will be stored for ninety days. CCC requires ninety days of stored cameras, video. I like to see that go a little bit above that, just uh just for precaution, safe side. And that can be provided to the police at any time if they need to uh need to see something. Security there is, it is very tight access in and out is controlled. Doors are locked all the time, a buzzer, a person customer comes up, shows their ID, they're buzzed in and then it's checked visually checked by a person inside. They come in, they're buzzed in, they buy their products and they're out. And then we make sure they leave the site. It's it's all access throughout the building is by card access. So a person working the floor will will not be allowed to get into the the vault where the product is stored. So it's 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 broken down into different layers of security. A manager can go just about anywhere, security can go just about anywhere, but then we limit the access inside. There'll be lighting outside to make sure that's lit at night so that cruisers going by can see the property and be able to check the building if need be. Secure, this is just so you know, my security company, we provide security now for four dispensaries cultivation sites. So I've been, I've been actively working at this for the last almost five years now since I retired as a police officer.
Can I ask the name of your company?
My company's ECM Incorporated.
Yeah, I saw that.
We're licensed, we're licensed with the state, fully insured. I have approximately fifty security officers that work work with me. I hire mostly retired law enforcement, military, ex-military veterans, and I have several off-duty firefighters that work for me part-time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just want to make one clarification. I believe Mitch men- mentioned that Chief Perkins approved his security plan. Chief doesn't.
No, 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 no. I did, if I, no, I've sent him, I've sent him. He's not making any approvals on anything.
No approvals.
As long as I meet the CCC requirements, that's all he asks.
Yeah, he would be okay with that.
I want to make sure that's clarified for the people at home. It's not an approval. It is a non-objection.
Absolutely.
Yep.
And it's it's that way in Muddborough also.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, I assume that you don't have any building plans yet, right? That's still in the process.
I think that the blueprint for the building plan was there, I believe, no? Dominic, was that what we showed earlier with the flow through?
So all we, all we have at the at the time is just a a basic layout. And then, once we get through the process a little, a little further, we certainly will will then make a full set of building plans. And I think the area where that we're, we're gonna start inside is uh forty, it's forty seven hundred square feet we indicated that we're gonna be using out of the total seventy thousand square foot warehouse. So just a portion, about six, seven percent of the building.
So what's gonna happen with the rest of the building?
Currently, the building is being leased to a Fowler Transportation. They do storage and they they run a freight business out of there. We're gonna continue the lease with them. The two facilities that that I own in in Lakeville, I believe I've owned these facilities for the past seven to eight years. So there are tenants in some of these, some of these buildings and we're gonna continue to uh to lease them.
Okay. All right, um does anybody else have anything that they want to bring up right now?
Can we just talk about, I know it says there was a traffic analysis done? Any wanna shed information on that?
So we we haven't conducted any traffic analysis, but we don't believe that that there will be much of a negative impact with regards to traffic. I think, believe earlier on, when these facilities started to come online in the state, there were significant traffic impacts, but as as facilities open in different communities throughout the state, that that has become less and less of a concern. I think that the existing facility is located sufficiently far enough away from Route forty four. There's already some, there's a traffic flow already within the park itself. So we could certainly look into it as part of the permitting process, but we don't really anticipate any negative traffic impact at this time.
Okay.
Okay, um, anything else? Anybody want to bring anything up about the host agreement? You know, we'll, we'll have to get town council, you know, to look at it and then we'll have to make a recommendation as to what you know, we want the host agreement, you know, to look like, but is there anything, any input that you want to give us having to do with the host agreement?
We're happy to to work with the town in either direction if if they want a new agreement or amend the existing. Probably amending the existing is the easiest and most direct way to do it. In terms of our next steps is that once we get your approval, our next step is to sponsor a outreach meeting in the community and start that process. So that would be our our next steps.
Okay, so I guess we'll get back to you. If nobody has anything else, we thank you for coming.
Can I just ask one more question?
Sure.
Do you, is there any way to know, and I know that scheduling right now is difficult for you to do, is there any way to anticipate when we might be able to reconvene and talk about the host community agreement and when you, when you feel you might be ready to vote on this project?
Well, I would say that, you know, um probably sometime this week, we'll discuss it with the town. probably sometime this week, we'll discuss it with the town council. And then we'll get back to you, and then we'll be ready to take the next step. So I mean, it won't be weeks away, let's put it that way. It'll be within the next couple of weeks, so.
Is there any other additional information that you need from us to help you consider this proposal?
Not right now. We just have to talk about, we, we, the town has to talk about how this, how the agreement should be structured, because I was, like I said, I was taken back that it was already in the agreement. You know, as I mentioned, you know, you, Brian, so I don't know legally because this is going to be two separate Board of Appeals permits that it could be under the same agreement. So that's an issue too.
Yeah, I, we're under, I think we're in uncharted waters.
You said, you said it, not me. I agree. But I promise you, we'll try to get back to you as quickly as we can, and it, believe me, it won't be a month. Probably be the end of this week or the first next week.
Yeah.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, you guys just sat through our meeting schedule. We're pretty much planning our meeting every week, so soon as we're ready and talk to council and all that stuff, we can, we can, we have plenty of dates coming up, so.
Yeah, we recognize that this is strange times, so, you know, we want to be accommodating to the town and work with the town, so just let us know what you need and when you need us, and we'll be there.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Rich, are you still with me? There you are.
I'm still here.
Okay. So I don't know what you want to do. If you want to do a call with Maureen to council or whatever, and then Maureen can get me updated, I, I, you know, I don't know what, how you want to do it.
I would think that Maureen and I should talk to town council. We've already talked to them about another host agreement, so because we had concerns about that one as well, so.
And I'll forward on all our documentation from today, so town council can look at it before we speak. So better idea of where we're at, but like I said, even though they said the special permit was, was done, it looks like they're still drafting the language as far as, that's the last update I have on it. And I checked with town clerk, and they don't have the permit, and it's not at the at the registry yet, so.
Who's draft, who's drafting the language, Maureen?
This should be Katie Lofman.
Oh.
Yeah.
When, when did they get their permit?
The special permit?
Yeah.
It looks like it was a January 17th meeting. So I'm not sure if there's something that happened. I was going to look back in the meetings and see if something held it up. But I know it got held over on the 17th to another meeting, so I think it was in February sometime. And I, and I know everyone's struggling through the same thing. Everything's taking a lot longer to get done than it was before, so I can reach out and see where that's at. I just didn't know better to have them complete that or not complete that if they want to go through with this process.
Well, I don't think they're going to have a, I don't think they're going to have a choice. Because the Board of, you've held all the hearings, the Board of Appeals, you know, have voted on it, okay? And they can't rescind it based upon a change to the host agreement, so you have, you have two, two different facilities here. It's not the same building. This is a different problem. You know, so I, I don't think that that can happen, so I would suggest that we try to set a call up, you know, with town council, if it's Katie and whoever else, I forget who was the other person we talked to, I don't remember her name. Was it Katie?
Katie's the number one for.
So if we can do that over the next couple of days, then we could figure out where she is in finalizing the permit and, you know, what our options are.
Right.
I thought Brian said that he couldn't get paperwork from us. I thought he said that early on. Can we check to be sure that there's?
I didn't think that's, I thought he said from, from the registry, he didn't get the paperwork, so I'll double-check where the holdup is, but I, I know I didn't get anything last month on it. I looked through everything, so I have no updates, just that it was going to be decided. That was.
Okay, I just want to be sure it's not sitting in our Board of Appeals.
No, that's not, that's not the impression I was given, but I'll, I'll ferret it out.
Okay. All right. All right, so, thanks, Rich. Next, we have, I just wanted to put this on the agenda, discuss the renovations of the Board of Selectmen's Office. Just like a lot of other things, so we don't forget. I, I know that we're using lamps and everything else still. It would be really nice to have some lighting there. So I know that we don't want people in the office working right now, but I know that Nate Darling said it's possible to have some folks maybe come in on the weekends, but at a minimum, where we last left off was, we wanted to put some kind of a conference room in. So I guess, at a minimum, if we can see what, I know there's been changes, what a design may look like at this point. And if we can start there, just to see where maybe we can fit that conference room or a workstation or and then at least we can be doing that while we're waiting for things to open up, not open up.
So there's a whole host, oh, if I can, if I may. Whole host of items to be checked off. Tracy and I were just looking at it today, prior to the meeting. And we can't move forward with anything else until we do the electrical. That, that's our number one to do. So if we could do something on the weekends and have some people in to do the, the lighting, the four lights over the, over the area, and to the category six wiring for the, for the voiceover IP, that's where we would take the first steps. And then all the other stuff would fall in line after, but I think it would, unlike the last time where we, we were, we had people in the office when we're doing stuff, I, I would say we would do it on like Tracy's vacation. And, you know, when she's taking some vacation days and be able to clear out that office, do it right, and then put it back together. So.
I also had some questions, because again, this is something that predates me. But I do know that when a lot of construction was going on last year, there was, oh, this is all, has been budgeted in the year before, and I'd like to see a budget.
Yeah, I still have $9,000 left of that budget, and that will cover everything that we needed to do going forward. We have all the furniture now, so we don't have to buy the furniture. The furniture was the most expensive, believe it or not, all the the stuff. It's the flooring. And that we just need to continue. We've already done everything else in here. The flooring, a wall up in between where that doorway is. You know, the doorway that connects the two offices?
Yep.
A doorway, and then.
The plan, though, to put that doorway there? See, that's what I'm saying. It's like, I, I really don't know where it was left off. I'd really like some information on, you know.
You can draw it up in my awesome drawing plans, if you'd like.
I would like to see, though, the breakdown on all the money that's been spent, though, because I've had a few people ask me, so, you know, people have the right to know.
So I can speak to anything this year?
Well, I mean, can we put something on paper? Can we get a breakdown? It's got to be a, it's got to be a spreadsheet or something that we can do.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay.
It's $9,000 left out of that, and of that, that going to lighting, electrical work, painting, the flooring, and some minor carpentry, and that's it. And the movers, someone to actually physically move those mammoth desks.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are just very difficult to get out and about, but yeah, we, we have it covered as far as what we need to spend and what we have left to do.
Okay. Rich, any questions on that?
Nope, all set.
Okay. Thank you, Maureen. Thank you, Tracy, on that. So now we have the agenda item number seven. Discuss the FY '21 capital plan.
Okay.
Oh, Rich.
Well, we have the preliminary capital plan that actually we've had for a little bit, for a while. The question really is, at this point, you know, I think we got to be a little more conservative and probably not say that we don't need this stuff. We certainly do need this stuff. But I think we ought to cut back for now and try to save some of our free cash money, which is about a million dollars. In case we have a problem, you know, with the F-21 budget. Since we have no idea what's going on from a revenue standpoint from the state, I just think that we need to try to cut back a little bit and be a little more conservative on what we're going to propose at the annual town meeting. So you know, I don't know if we want to talk about some of these things. I know that I have some opinions on things that we could probably wait. But if you quickly want to get on the list, we can do that.
Yeah, because I know that when I had talked to department heads too, I don't know if this makes sense to anybody else, but I said, you know, even if your most important thing isn't the cheapest thing, you know, I want the most important thing up at the top of the list because we may have to cut back, so I don't want to not get what we absolutely need just because we can afford some other things instead, so. So anyways, so like, right at the top of the list is a police cruiser. I mean, we kind of need to replace those regularly. So.
But we don't need the unmarked car cruiser right now.
Right.
Can do about that till the fall.
And, and speaking to the chief, we haven't got the two that we ordered in 2020 yet. So, you know, I think we could stretch that to be something that maybe we discuss in the fall, Rich, if there is still, you know, money left over. I, I don't see it as the biggest issue on here as far as getting those filled, because those go based on mileage. Not, because they're only a few years old. They're based on mileage, so you know, we just want to replace them in a timely manner, but if we stretch it out another six months to, you know, eight months after that, I think we'd be in okay position.
Okay, we'll consider that. As far as the $50,000 for the pickup truck for the fire department, I think we, we have one. It's not like this is something too new that we need. It's a replacement, so I would put that off once again until, till the fall, you know, as a consideration. Going down to the generator, we really need the generator at the town hall.
Agreed.
It needs to be upgraded, so that, it's definitely a priority, and that's $50,000. I mean, the town has already approved 17, I guess, so far.
Yeah, so it would be, in addition to that 17, would be the 50, and that would cover it.
So that, that definitely needs to be done. I mean, it, it's running, but it's not running well.
Right.
As far as the small boat is concerned, we certainly can don't need that, you know, right now. We go down to the highway department, we take out the 375 and the roadwork, which we've already scheduled, you know, roadwork to be done in July anyways from chapter, chapter 90 money. As far as the stormwater management, I think that we need to consider holding off on that as well, but we got to find out what our requirements are from a contractual standpoint, you know, whether we have to pay any additional money or we can hold off on that. So I think we need to look at that, Maureen.
So we have additional contractual obligations that are into the budget, so this, these are projects that are supposed to be completed. So I don't think we'd be out of violation to do any of these, but I will double, double-check MS4 language.
As far as the rest of the highway department, Franklin says that he can do without the new skid shear with the attachment, which is $92,000. He can probably wait on the sweeper, but he dearly needs a new sweeper. You know, if we had to, but once again, it would only be delayed till the fall.
Yep.
So that's a consideration, so. Going to the second page. We definitely can delay the historic commission archaeological survey until the fall. $30,000. I think the sale coating on the transfer station comes out of the enterprise fund anyways. So that's probably okay. I'm not sure I understand the town side for the strategic IT budget, $50,000. I don't know what's in that, what that means.
Okay, there's a plan that has been in place for like a three-year plan. This is the last of the three years, I think. I will, I'll see if I can get that to you, a copy of what's on that.
The $23,000 for security systems, I really think we should consider doing that. Because that also protects our buildings and so forth, so. As far as the park commission is concerned, they're going to have to relook at their total budget, because if if Clariporn doesn't open as a possibility, it's not been decided yet, so then everybody gets too excited. But if it doesn't open, that's going to hurt their revenue projections, so I know that Maureen and Todd and Scott from the park commission are going to look at their budget to try to redo their numbers. Because, I mean, that's, their budget is probably the most iffy budget, you know, right now, so we have, we have to take a look at that. The COA flooring, Nate doesn't think we should do the flooring at all, so $22,000 can come out of there.
So I had talked to Nate at length on this project, and we have a, a short-term fix, that it's like, it'll pull us through a couple of years where they put a sealant over the tiles and fill in any of the gaps to make sure that there's no problems. And then if we have anything that we need to do, we can hold off a few years on it, and it'll be, it'll be a better product than what we got now to address any of the issues, and that's probably about $2,000.
Okay, he can take that out of his facility account. The peach barn roof, there's an estimate right now, $15,000. It's got to be done. There's a big hole on that roof. And so we, we have to address this. This is definitely a priority. As far as the air scrubber and health safety, this has to be done, because this is for the new, they're going to be putting the equipment in the old salt shed.
Yep.
And this, this needs to be done, so.
Great.
So, so if we can recalculate those when you get a chance, Maureen, then we can try to at least a good portion of this stuff, but I mean, I think we just talked about eliminating about $500,000, I think, so.
Can we just go back to our budget meeting night when Jamie, the librarian, was with us? Didn't we say that her printer?
That can come out of the IT budget.
Okay, so do we have that? Do we not have that?
That's, go ahead, it's in the operating budget.
Yeah, it's in the operating budget, so it's part of the equipment in the operating budget. So originally, she thought it was going to be over $10,000. That's why we had it in the capital plan, but when it came back at like, was it $3,400, Rich? Somewhere around there?
Forty-four, yeah.
$4,400. It didn't qualify unless we kind of grouped it together, but we figured we could pull it out of the IT operational budget.
Okay.
Okay, so that's kind of where we are. Then once, maybe at the next meeting, we can try to finalize this, and then we know that we've been trying to set a meeting up for a couple of months now, you know, with the, with the capital expenditure committee, so we can it's too bad because, you know, they haven't had the opportunity to, you know, review this plan.
This is kind of a different year than, than the rest.
We're just going to have to deal with what we got and move forward, so.
Looks like a quarter of our free cap, like around $275,000.
What?
$275,000.
We cut?
Nope, that's what is left.
Oh, that's what's left?
Yeah, yes, so. Yeah, so our first vote would be to spend this $275,000, and then we would figure out in the fall town meeting what else we still have to appropriate, and then we can go through that list again.
You mean, it's $275,000, the ones we cut out, or?
No, the total of all capital expenditures, I'm looking at 23, 30, 22, 150, 15, 50. It looks like $275,000.
Okay. All right. All right. Okay. That's it.
All right. Okay. So agenda item number eight is to discuss and finalize the date for the annual town election. So we tentatively picked June, someone help me out here, fifteenth?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, yep. As the town election, again, for the same reason, just being cautious and conservative, we didn't vote it in yet. But at this point, I have had lengthy conversations with the clerk and she would really like to try to get the absentee voting and early voting by mail going. So if we could try to vote in that date, Rich, that could be really helpful. So we originally had rescheduled the April town election. We picked the date of June sixteenth. Again, for anyone at home, that election, it's hard for us to just pick a date because we have the regional school committee. So we have to work with Free Town. So Free Town has selected June sixteenth. I believe they voted it in. So, Rich, I would make a motion to reschedule the election date to June sixteenth.
I'll second that motion with discussion.
Okay. So I don't know if you want to go first because depending on what you say, I have some stuff to offer here from the clerk about voting and everything else.
Well, the, the first thing is that having to do with the date itself, if we vote that in right now, okay, and it needs to be changed, okay, moved to the end of June, then we're going to require a special legislation in order to do that. So I think that the governor was anticipating to have a decision by now as to whether he, what he was going to, what they were going to recommend to open up, you know, to allow things to start happening. So my only concern is that maybe we should wait till the end of the week, of next Monday because the governor is going to make a decision as to whether he's going to extend the state of emergency or not. And coincidentally, I was watching the news today. The, the state of New York was having their presidential primary on June twenty-third and they have completely postponed it. So that would be my only concern is that if you do it now, then you won't be able to move it unless you have special legislation. That's my only concern.
Yeah. For me, whether he extends it or not, I think there's still going to be social distancing in place, no matter what. So I know a lot of the clerks, not just our clerk, but a lot of the clerks are really, you know, the governor has changed, the legislature has changed the requirements on absentee voting. Usually you have to be away in order to be, to do absentee voting. Now they're just allowing it for everyone. And the problem we're running into is you have to send a request to the clerk's office in one way, shape or another, either the absentee ballot request, or you could even submit, just print off a letter as long as it has your signature and your information, name, address. But she, the town clerk needs to put a date on by which she can send out those ballots. So I know she wants to try to get this absentee ballot campaign going. And that was my only reason for wanting to make a motion. So I, you know, I, it's kind of hard for her to make a schedule and say, you have to have your absentee ballot in by this time. And you really can't send out any kind of information without having a date on it. So it just kind of a conundrum. So I, I don't know what we do here. I guess we can encourage people to be submitting for an absentee ballot, but we really can't post anything about it because usually these things have firm dates, like it has to be returned for a, an application for an absentee ballot has to be returned, let's say, two days before the voting day. So there's time to mail it to you and then you can bring it back. So we just have a hard time putting an end date if we don't have an election date to put in there. So that's kind of the conundrum that we're faced with.
But just to follow up on that, if we set the date now of June sixteenth, okay?
Yep.
Then we got to have that election. And that's, and that's not just by absentee ballot.
Right.
You have to physically have the election.
Yep.
So that's a concern to me that the town clerk should understand that if we are getting no better here in a short period of time, then we will have to postpone this meeting because we're not going to expose, you know, the poll workers, number one, and the town residents, number two, which is important, you know, in order to have, you know, this election. So that was my only recommendation was, was to wait another week until the governor says what he's going to do and what his recommendations are going to be. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah. And I was hoping that he would have given us some sort of direction by the end of last week, knowing that. And maybe he hasn't because maybe they are working on something. I mean, it's hard for us to know. We can't, you know, we really can't be guessing here. So I, I just, you know, we can strongly encourage people to, to, to get the absentee ballot.
And that's okay.
Yep.
But if you call it for the sixteenth, you're physically going to have an election.
Right. Well, no, I know that. And, and I mean, I know that one part of me says, well, you know, we have to, this isn't just going to be, you know, even if the fourth isn't extended, I don't think anything's just going to go back to normal. You know, there's going to be accommodations made. We're probably going to have to, you know, I was discussing this with her that even if nothing gets extended, we're probably still going to have to make the waiting line six feet apart. You know, we're going to have to have plexiglass screens between, you know, the voters and the poll workers. So, you know, there's a lot that's going on here. And I mean, I don't mind waiting, but I just, my, my, my hope is that anybody who can vote by mail, as long as it's being offered, should be trying to do that at this point. So that way we don't have to worry. Your vote is going to be counted whether the election's on the sixteenth or whether the, you know, the, it's, it's, you know, whether the state of emergency is extended. It's just, I, I know Lillian is trying to do this too and do a real big campaign so that we can get as many people to vote as possible. We don't want anyone saying, gee, I didn't know I could do that or, you know, and she wants to advertise this on the town website, on the town Facebook page, put an ad in whatever, Middle Borough Gazette, uh, uh, whatever we call those things. Public press release. So my hope is that even if we don't vote that actual day in today, that it doesn't matter. We have to have that election. I just would hope that people would be doing their census and doing their absentee voting. So.
I, I, I don't have a problem doing it, but I want to make sure I'm, unfortunately, the town clerk should be part of this conversation that, you know, two weeks from now or three weeks from now, we say, oh, we now have to postpone the election again. And we can't postpone the election without special legislation. I mean, that's unfortunate the way the state works, but it is. So I mean, if you could move it to the end of the month and so forth, but that's not the case. So I don't want to hear that two or three weeks from now, we're going to say, we can't do this. We need to postpone it. And so I am not in favor of exposing the poll workers or exposing the town residents if this doesn't get any better.
Yeah.
I just want to be upfront with that. I don't mind voting for it.
Yeah, I, I, I absolutely understand your concern. I just, I just, I just want people to have the opportunity to vote. So in the meantime, you know, while we're waiting, and like I said, I was really hoping that last week we would have gotten some kind of direction. But I don't know, maybe they're working on the special legislation. I don't know. I don't, I wish I knew what was going on, but there's so much going on. And I just, you know, really want this, you know, campaign to go on and I want people to be able to see it. It's also supposed to be going in the Council on Aging newsletter. So if anyone's watching out there, it doesn't really matter, you know, if we decide the date or not. You can still be getting early voting by mail and an absentee vote. So. So anyways, I'm just going to read before we vote, I'm just going to read what Lillian's provided, what the clerk has provided. So. So as far as absentee voting, it says, the law allows any person taking precaution related to COVID nineteen to vote by absentee ballot. All applications for an absentee ballot must be received by the town clerk before twelve noon on the last business day before the election. So that's where having that date would fit in. Any person may apply for an absentee ballot by, by sending a request to the town clerk's office or filling out the absentee ballot application. Absentee ballot applications are available at town hall. Right now they're in that vestibule that's set up or on the website. Your absentee voting ballot must be received by the town clerk before the polls close at eight P M. on election day. So basically what that means is you can use, there's a couple of different applications on the website that you, that you can access and you can fill those out, mail them into the town clerk's office to town hall, or you can actually drop them off at the vestibule. Or you can print off just a letter that says, you can even write it by hand. That says, you know, I, if I get leaphavian, request an absentee ballot. You put your information, if I get leaphavian with your address, you have to sign it. If it does not have a signature, it's not a, a good request. You have to sign it. And the clerk's office is open, answering phone calls if you want help, trying to figure this out. You know, so we may, you know, we may not know when we're doing this, but we do have the ballot. So I'm encouraging people to just try to vote. So it doesn't matter. So you don't even have to show up at the polls that day. Early voting by mail is very similar. In response to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic, Governor Baker signed an act in regards to upcoming elections in the Commonwealth. This act now provides early voting by mail for elections held before June thirtieth, twenty twenty. This will give voters an opportunity to vote by mail to eliminate large turnouts at the polling places. We highly recommend that voters take advantage of this option, an early vote by mail. Any person may obtain an early voting ballot by sending a request to the town clerk's office, same as the other. I mean, at this point, they're both, it's almost like they're interchangeable. You can use the early voting app, the clerk said. Just get your request and they will mail you the ballot, but then you have to get it back to the clerk by eight P M. on election day. Absentee and early ballot applications or any written and signed request can be put in the drop box, sent in by mail. And then you can do an email, but you still need to provide a signature. So if you just send an email, you're still going to have to provide a signature at some point. So. All right. Well, I withdraw my motion then. Can I do that?
You don't have to withdraw your motion. I just want, I want everybody to understand what it means. That's all.
I know, I know. But it, you know, um, well, I, I, I'm just.
You want to go ahead with it? It's fine with me. I just want to make sure that two or three weeks from now, we have to postpone it, that we don't, you know, you know, everybody understands that we're going to postpone it. So that's all I'm saying.
My biggest thing, like I just said, is the absentee vote. I, I mean, I've already filled out my thing. I just have to get it to town hall because I just don't want to have to worry about going to the polls that day, whenever it is. So I, 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 I really, you know, this is just added to the COVID nineteen, I don't know pile. I wish I had the answers, but.
Madam Chair, may I also mention that we, we did request of, and, and they did vote in Free Town to have that election on June sixteenth to be aligned with us.
Yeah. Okay. Well, you know what, Rich? Let's see what happens.
No, I don't, I don't mind voting for it. I just, I just, I just don't want, you know, people to say two or three weeks from now because we don't know anything.
Right.
The governor said that he was going to make a decision and we all know that the state of emergency is going to be extended.
Yeah.
I mean, if anybody thinks that on May fourth, he's going to open anything up, it's not going to happen.
No, but my hope is by June fourth, maybe, you know, we'll be trying to get to that new normal. Well, let's just see what happens. All those in favor? Baby and I. What did you say? Okay. All right. So annual election date, June sixteenth, and Rich's concerns are my concerns also and definitely noted. Tracy, are we good? Am I doing things right here? Did we lose Tracy?
Oh, you know what? I hear you, Trace. You're on.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. No, it, no, it's, it's good. I, I, you know.
You keep me in line. I like that. Okay. Agenda item number nine, discuss the FY twenty and the FY twenty-one budget. So this is not the capital plan. That's different. And I'm going to ask Rich, who is our selectman, uh, working on the budget to work on this.
From fiscal twenties budget, you know, we're waiting for the monthly reports, you know, to come out for April. And I, I don't know, what, what was, was the close date for April, Maureen? Do you know? I, whatever it is. It's sometime this week anyways. So.
So Friday will be the first day.
So we'll have to look at that. And then for the next meeting, I'm sure we'll have further discussions about the February, the fiscal twenty budget. As far as twenty-one is concerned, once again, you know, we have our budgets pretty much finalized. I mean, there's a few things here and there, you know, overall, but those aren't the problems. The problem is the revenue numbers. And I know the state is working on the revenue numbers and they probably won't have anything to us for a couple of weeks anyways. So those are kind of in a holding pattern, but based upon Tracy's schedule that we have, you know, we got to make some decisions here in the middle of May. So that's kind of where we are. So.
Oh, boy.
Do you have anything on the budgets right now, Maureen? I, I don't have anything else. Do you?
Well, and we know we're going to be overspending on, obviously on the firefighter line for an ambulance line as far as, you know, our salaries and, and we have that projected and some of it will be covered by other salaries and some of it we'll have to try to get some reimbursement for, you know, after everything wraps up and some FEMA reimbursements for the emergency situation that we find ourselves in. But our department heads are doing a good, a, a good job, holding things tight and not making unnecessary expenditures and, and keeping track of where they're going to be, have a little overage or, or they're going to be short of, of what our budget has. So we're, we're pretty much in line. Like Rich said, this, this isn't a budget problem. It, it's a revenue.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I mean, we went into this with pretty much a level services kind of a budget. We didn't go in with any, you know, big plans or ideas or, you know, adding tons of positions or, you know, so we went into it pretty conservatively to begin with. So, okay. All right. Can I, when you guys get that, when you get that report, I know, can you let me know? Because I'm not coming there every day to check my mailbox. So.
I'll drop it in your mailbox for you. It's, it's cumbersome to look at online. It's awful.
I know. All right. Agenda item number ten. So I do know Rich has been doing lots and lots and lots of work with a lot of the contracts we have going on. So this is to discuss the event management contract for Loon Pond Lodge. And again, I will, I had a conversation before I let you start, Rich, I'll just add this, that I did have a talk with the clerk again, and she's just hoping that whatever we do, if we decide to use the same person, if we find a new, whatever. whatever we do, if we decide to use the same person, if we find a new, whatever, however this contracting plays out, is that we can sort of represent the early voting concerns, the time that we need at the actual Loon Pond Lodge to do voting. Again, I reiterated with her to be sure that it's the smaller room that she needs for voting. So if in some way, shape or form, the contract can reflect that during, and of course, these dates are, you know, planned well in advance. So it's not like it should be a surprise to anyone what these dates are. But so if we can just keep that in mind, if and when we're gonna be working on any contract to make sure that they know that there has to be that access for voting. So I'll let you take that away, Rich.
Maureen, I assume that the town clerk has already requested the early voting in November?
He has.
And it's been approved?
Um, we've submitted it to them and there was no issue. So we are all set for early voting for
November.
Which, whatever the next election is for early voting. Yes. Because she's not gonna have the Saturday voting. That was the only pivot issue. She's not gonna have it on Saturday, so that's okay. I've also asked her to submit the next three years. And that's how we'll be doing it going forward. Because a lot of times when people do weddings, they do it multiple years in advance. So if we have things blocked out well in advance, it makes it easier for everyone all the way around.
Well, I would suggest that we also, you know, if we do renew this contract, that we put it right in the contract. So there's no questions, 'cause we know what the dates are. I mean, it's not really, they don't, they don't change. But anyways. So actually, Maureen and I had started this, I would say, back in January, when we were meeting with a couple of members of the Park Commission, having to do with the, what they call the Event Management Agreement, which is the company that manages the events, you know, for the Park Commission, that the contract was was gonna be expiring and that we needed to look at. You know, the contract itself, there is an extension period that's allowed, or do we go out to bid again and so forth. So that's kinda where we are, you know, at this point. There is a couple of things that, you know, as Maureen and I reviewed this contract that need to be addressed now. And that is that according to the contract, we're supposed to be receiving 20% of all catering fees and we're only receiving 18. And I guess the question is, we don't know why. So what, what I think we should do in the short term is draft a letter, you know, to them, basically saying that, you know, we signed an agreement with you and so forth and so on, that we've only been receiving 18%, and we should be 20%. That's one issue. The second issue is that according to this contract, they're supposed to be providing certificates of insurance, you know, on an annual basis. And the last time we received a certificate of insurance was November 15, 2017, which is almost three years ago. So we need a certificate of insurance now, which is, you know, which is listed the town of Lakeville for this, for this insurance. So I would say we need to draft this letter as soon as possible to address those, at least those two concerns that exist right now and get an answer. So the next question then becomes we can, we can extend this contract if we want to. Or we can get extended for up to three years if we want to. Or we can decide that we wanna go out to bid again. So that's something we need to decide shortly because this contract expires on 11/1/2020 and goes by pretty quick.
Okay. So the first question I have with all this is who's supposed to follow up with all the contract stuff? Is it supposed to be the selectmen? Because technically, the contract is signed with the Board of Selectmen, not the Park Commission. So is it supposed to be? Does anyone have an answer for that question? Is it supposed to be the Board of Selectmen that follows up? Is it supposed to be the Park Commission that follows up to make sure that we have the certificates of insurance? Is it supposed to be the town administrator? I mean, I really, I've heard all different things. I've heard, you know, that the selectmen are actually the ones that sign the contract, which is very true. The selectmen sign the contract on behalf of the town unless we, you know, authorize the town administrator, who still works in the selectman's office. So. So if, if we know it's the selectmen, then the selectmen can go through and follow up every year. But I believe that in the past, the selectman's office assumed the Parks Commission was doing it. The Parks Commission assumed the selectmen were doing it. So I'd really like to get that question answered, actually. Who's supposed to be doing all the follow-up on the contract stuff? Anyone?
Oh, go ahead.
I do know that the former town administrator used to stay on top of the karate studio and say the something win certificate of insurance. That was an annual thing. And I even believe those two things are on our annual list that we do. But as far as the management company, we assumed that the Park Commission, you know, giving them, you know, they're in charge of that building and, you know, that's kinda their, their thing. So we assumed that that was happening. Getting a certificate of insurance is just as easy as placing a call to Bill Fuller and he would be right on it.
Yep. So I guess that's what I would really like to see put on, put in writing somewhere, you know, that who is, because there's no, there's no reason why we shouldn't have a current insurance certificate. And you're right, Tracy. We have the karate studio. We have the coffee shop that we rent out. We have the management company here. There's a lot of contracts. And, you know, yes, the selectmen do sign these agreements because we're signing on behalf of the town, but we need to be sure, you know, that someone is, is, is doing this. So I don't know how we.
It's, it's quite simple. The selectmen sign the contract, selectmen are responsible, the selectman's office is responsible to make sure that either there's amendments to the contract or certificates of insurance. So I don't think you can pick and choose which ones you should and which ones you shouldn't. So it's obvious that, you know, this fell through the cracks here. But as far as the 20% versus the 18%, I believe that comes under the, that should, the Park Commission should have caught that because there's the ones that submit the information on a monthly basis. So I have no idea why that happened, but we need to get an answer.
And, and that, that goes.
That's their responsibility, not ours.
But that revenue goes to the Park Commission, correct? It doesn't go to the general fund of the town. It goes to the enterprise fund, which is the Park Commission. So you know, I don't know what we have to do in this case. I don't know, Rich, if we, you know, create a selectman's policy, joint selectman, you know, Park Commission policy where, you know, we actually put in, put it in writing that the selectmen follow through.
Leah, this is standard stuff. I mean, as far as contracts are concerned. We don't need to put a policy in place for one contract.
No, but.
This is our responsibility as selectman's office because we are responsible to execute all of the contracts. And the town accountant's office is to make sure that they have copies of all of the contracts and they're verifying that the contracts are being enforced.
But, I mean, I do know when Maureen attended the Park Commission meeting a couple of weeks ago, you know, there was some talk about when the contract left the Park Commission, it was at 18%. When it came back from the selectman's office, it was at 20%. So, you know, I.
Well, the signed contract is very specific. And as I told everybody, if you look at the minutes, the selectman's meeting on November 4, 2017, who was attended by Bill Fuller, who's the owner of the company, very specifically said, said it was 20%. So there's, there's no dispute about that. I mean, that's what it was signed for. So to say that somebody changed it in between, this is the executed contract that we have and both sides.
Signed by all parties.
Signed by all parties and both sides need to follow it. That's all.
Okay. So I guess I'd like to see, you know, just, I don't know if we have a calendar or something that we can.
We do.
We do.
All right. So, and if at that time, we can, you know, do a, when we're checking on this sort of thing, if we can, I don't know, Maureen, as the town administrator, or I'm not quite sure.
You can put it now. Just like everything else. We have the karate studio on our calendar. We have all the contracts that, you know, between Tracy and I, once a month, we go over and we see what's coming up the next month. And we have that going. We just add this to the list.
If we can add this, but could you put like a little asterisk next to it and say, can we do like a healthy visit checkup with the Park Commission and make sure?
A wellness checkup?
A wellness checkup and make sure that everyone's on board with whatever it is that, you know, they're supposed to be getting in revenue. Because again, it's not going to the general fund of the town. This is going to the actual Park Commission. They really use the money.
Yeah, and we didn't have any visibility to that until Rich and I started asking for some of the documents. So we had no idea that there was a discrepancy between the 20 and the 18% until we started asking for all the documents. And then we, you know, we could see it. Actually, Rich eagle-eyed it like right off the bat, that there was.
Not that eagle eye doesn't hate rich.
Looking for every dollar we can get.
Well, and, and that's the thing though. I mean, the Park Commission really does need every dollar, especially, they're usually selling, you know, the memberships to, they're usually, yeah, doing the memberships to Clear Pond right now. So Rich is absolutely right. Their, their revenue, their whole budget's gonna be the most affected. So.
The only difference going forward on this contract that would make it different than the other contracts, Rick, is because this contract, well, this particular contract has specific provisions about performance and about any type of loss due to, you know, something that, an event and something broke and all that stuff. I would have to get oversight onto, onto those things too and to involve myself in if the park wasn't executing the contract.
Well, I think the other thing too, no matter whether it's this company or some other company, we gotta make sure that the documentation that they provide us is a lot better than what we're getting.
I agree. To be able to look at it and just be able to have it in hand and have it on a regular basis will just avoided some of these things, you know, early on.
Yep. And, and I mean, you know, I, I, I'm not, you know, just, I just want you and Tracy to know and everyone to know that, I mean, I'm not just sitting here saying, you know, here's another layer of work for you to do. But I mean, these are actually, and at any given time, you know that you can ask the selectmen to help out. But, you know, like Rich has and by going over a lot of these contracts and everything. So we just need to make sure that everything is getting done, you know.
And we just need the language in the, in the contract that says who does what, and that way there's no confusion going forward.
Yep. And I really would like the language to be in whatever contract, if we extend or not, for the elections. I mean, that has to be there. There can't be, you know, there can't be this, well, you know, we don't know. And it has to be there. It's our right to vote and I wanna have a place to vote when COVID-19 is gone. So I will do my vote by mail, but anyways.
So we don't have to make a decision today. But we gotta decide what we're gonna do.
Right.
So if you wanna think about it, we should do it next week.
Yep. I mean, I, we may as well talk about it. I mean, I'm okay. If we can clean up a few of these things, I'm okay with this. I'm, I'm, I'm okay either way. I don't have a, you know, I don't, I honestly can't remember who the park liaison selectman is, you or me, Rich. But, I mean, one of us, it's me? Okay. One of us can reach out and ask them, you know, how they feel. It's kinda hard to get everyone in the same room with virtual meetings, but you know, see what they wanna do. But, no, it really isn't. But it takes a long time. So if, if, it doesn't matter either way to me. I, we have ourselves as a reference for this, this particular company. So, you know, but yes, we should decide this sooner than later because if we decide to ask for new bids, then again, I know Tracy and Maureen have worked out a tentative timeline that we need to follow. So.
So, yeah, we, we can do that, whatever your vote is. I would just say, pardon me for interrupting now, Jim. I would just say, in the spirit of getting the best price and the best value, going out to bid, even if we decided to, you know, if they bid again, then they had the best bid, it's probably the best way to take care of the money of the town and making sure we're getting the best deal for the town. So whenever we have the opportunity, kind of go out for bid, probably not a bad idea to take that opportunity and help tighten everything up.
And I guess my only other thing is, I know, Rich, you've gone over this with a fine-tooth comb. Maureen, Tracy, does anyone, does the Park Commission, does anyone have, you know, anything that they'd like to see changed in this particular? You know, if, if we go out for new bids, is everything, can we use the old RFP or whatever it is? Or do we, we have any?
We'd have to amend it for all those things that we talked about for Lillian, for sure. Then we'd amend it for language on who is responsible for tasks and, and monitoring and what we are requiring of them. But this, we could, we could use this as a base contract.
So we're not asking for any significant changes in services they provide or?
I don't, I don't think that would be needed. Just reporting and mechanisms to collect and, you know, what's expected of both parties. As you know, like, the more information you can give people upfront on what's expected and the more, you know, you have it kind of buttoned up and ABC'd at the beginning, the better likelihood it is that you're gonna get a better product in the end. So anything we can do to tighten that up. And if one of you and myself wanna meet with the parks and ask if there's something specific that this contract isn't addressing for them, I think that'd be a solid idea too.
Okay. All right. I can work with you after the meeting on that, finding out when they're meeting next. And then we get it on our agenda as soon as we can right after that. All right, Rich, anything else on that?
Yeah, there is.
All right.
That's just one piece. The other part is that there's currently a cleaning service that's doing the cleaning for the events over there. And there's no contract, you know, that exists, even though this cleaning service was hired. And it says that it's, it's charging back the event for the cleaning service, but there isn't any contract in place, you know, to do that. So that has to be addressed, you know, as well. And the cleaning service was hired separately by the town, not part of this event management agreement. So.
So, correct.
Two.
They weren't hired by the town. They were hired by Selfie's management, I believe.
I, nobody conceived, understand the story. But there is no agreement in place. There's nothing in the agreement with the management services that says they're responsible for the cleaning service.
Yeah, they have no contract. They have no ability to assign contract.
Correct. So that's another issue.
Who, who pays these people?
Go ahead. The people that, the wedding, okay, if you have a wedding, there's a cleaning fee, okay? The cleaning fee gets paid back to the town and then the town pays the cleaning service.
So I'm assuming we don't have an insurance certificate for the cleaning people?
That's a pretty good assumption.
Okay. Well, clearly that can't go on.
They don't have a contract.
Ask for a copy of their contract and they, they didn't have a contract. They're operating month to month.
But how that happened, we don't know. So that's, that's number two. The third thing is that, you know, the vast tending service of New England, which has serviced the town for a long time. Okay. And there was an agreement signed back in May of 2014, which has. which has to be year to year because a liquor license is only approved on an annual basis. So you can't give somebody a bar servicing contract for three years because they, their license could be denied, okay? So Tracy, you know, found the original agreement, which I have, okay, back in 2014. And then every year, there's supposed to be an amendment, you know, to that agreement. And the only one that we have is dated April 23, 2016. So there has not been any amendments approved by the Board of Selectmen, by the way, for that period of time. So right now, the bar serving, bar service company does not have an amended contract in place. That's a problem, serious problem.
Yeah, that is.
Very serious. And once again, we don't have any certificates of insurance, you know, for the bartending service. This one concerns me more than the other two.
Well, yeah, because they're serving alcohol to people.
So anyway, so between Maureen and I, we'll have to draft a letter to them about this issue, you know, as well, because this needs to be addressed because the procurement of the bartending service is through the town and is not through the event management company. They have no authority to do that. So that's another problem that needs to be addressed.
So again, can I ask a question? How do they get paid? Who pays them?
They're the same company.
They're the same company. They're the same company as the vet management group. They run both.
Okay. I think I read that somewhere actually. And now their story's coming back to me. Okay.
Anyway, so, you know, I think we had enough discussion on this, but it's a matter of, you know, fixing these things, fixing what's going on right now. And then also taking it to the next step as to what we want to do next because it takes time to do the procurement and so forth. Okay?
Okay. All righty then. Okay, so I think we have a couple just housekeeping sort of things to do. Revisit, agenda item number 11. Revisit the vote regarding selectmen La Camera. That would be you, Rich, being designated as the selectman's designee on the police station building committee. So I guess at our last meeting, not I guess, I know at our last meeting, we voted to designate you as the selectman's designee on the police station building committee. And I think I had noted at that time that it was Aaron Burke who stayed on. But he was allowed to stay on because he didn't run for selectman again. So I guess there's a clarification. Can someone help me out here?
The clarification I was looking for, Madam Chair, is Aaron still, Rich was already on the police station building committee. And we just wanted to say that Rich will be the designee for the Board of Selectmen and Aaron will be the member at large now. That's it. Just a quick, clean, little summary.
So, do we need a motion, Tracy? Yes, no? So I will say that. So having previously been on the board as the selectman's designee, Aaron Burke will now be a.
Member at large?
Large and Rich La Camera. According to our vote last week, we made him the actual selectman's designee, even though he was the member at large. So we are switching those two positions, so.
We are?
I don't know. That's what we're supposed to be talking about, I guess.
So is that?
Well, well, as far as I knew, Aaron Burke was only slated to remain on the building committee until the project, the completion of the project itself.
The date that he is on the building committee is, Tracy, you can correct me, but it's in July, correct?
July 31 would be the expiration date.
2020?
Yes.
Yeah, so he was appointed till July. So that's where he was appointed till July 31.
Okay. So let me ask this question first. He's not a selectman anymore, so Rich's appointment as the selectman's designee is fine, correct?
Yes, but we need to, we need to figure out what happens with Aaron because he wasn't, he wouldn't vote to remove Aaron from the board.
So has anyone contacted Aaron to see if he even wants to stay on?
I sent a quick email and I haven't heard anything back yet.
Okay, Rich, anything? You've worked with him more than I have.
Well, I just don't understand why this is a big deal.
I don't understand why it's a big deal either.
He's on the committee and he will continue to be on the committee. The only reason why I asked him to be designated is the project is going to be closed out on June 30th and that's when the warranty expires. And I just wanted to take the responsibility to help Nate Darling, the building inspector, to take some of these things off his back to try to get this thing done. That's my only goal. Nobody's trying to remove anybody from the building committee.
All right, so.
Whatever you want to do is fine with me. I don't care.
So I mean, I, again, like when we had done the other committee there where we changed people around, when someone is supposed to be appointed to a certain position, I can see why we extend things out sometimes, but I usually like things to be according to the rulebook here. So the selectman's designee, as far as I'm concerned, should be a selectman. So I mean, would like, I would like for Rich to be that selectman's designee. And Aaron is still on the committee. And I guess if he wants the member at large position, then that's available to him, so.
So the vote would be to make him the member at large because in the last vote, it was just for Rich that left kind of that dangling, what's going on with Aaron.
Madam Chair, when I spoke to the town clerk about this, she didn't feel that a vote was needed.
Okay.
Because they're both already appointed.
They're already on the committee.
It's a matter of semantics at this point in time. They're both full members, they both have the same rights, responsibilities, expiration dates. It's just that Rich will be serving in the selectman's stead.
Yep. Okay. So are we good then? We're good. I think we just said that, right?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So discuss the, agenda item number 12. Discuss the appointment of the Americans with Disabilities Act Coordinator. Now, correct me if I'm wrong. Prior to this, wasn't this a Board of Selectmen member?
It's been a few different things. It was Aaron Burke, then for like a month, it was John. And prior to that, Tracy?
Yes, it typically has been a selectman.
Who else was there? Yeah. However, as I was actually going for grants, John gladly handed it over to me so I could write some grants and push the issue forward.
Okay. But I know at that time, I mean, I'm just curious again. I don't know if a rulebook exists, but I'd like us.
No, it's different people in different towns. A lot of towns have it as the human resources person.
Okay. Rich, do we have an opinion here?
No, I make a motion. We appoint the town administrator to fill the expired term on April 1, 2021. Tracy?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Baby and I. All right. Need a bigger rulebook. All right. Agenda item number 13. Discuss the appointment of a Serpent, of the Serpent Commissioner. Serpent has requested that the selectmen appoint their Serpent Commissioner. Maureen, our town administrator, Maureen Candido, is currently serving in this capacity. The new appointment would expire May 22, 21.
I'm moved.
All right, second that motion. All those in favor of making Maureen the commissioner extended out to May 22, 2020, 20? Yeah, 21.
Camera, aye.
Baby and I. All right. What do we got next? Agenda item number 14. Review and vote to accept the resignation of Richard Hagerman from the Conservation Commission. So the board has received, I am formally announcing my resignation from the Conservation Commission. I have enjoyed my time on this commission. Would like to thank the Board of Selectmen and my fellow commissioners for giving me this opportunity. It's been a valuable learning experience. I am moving from the Lakeville Middleborough area after 30 great years. Be safe, thank you, Rick. I make a motion that we accept Richard Hagerman's Conservation Commission resignation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Baby and I.
Madam Chair, there is no sufficient member on the Conservation Commission to consider being moved up to full membership. So I would assume I should just get this out there and advertise for letters of interest.
Yes, that would be great. And of course, if they have a, you know, recommendation or whatever, we will certainly entertain putting it on an agenda quickly.
Do, typically what we do for these things is we get the letters of interest and then I send them over to the Conservation Commission for review. They like to meet with the candidates and then they would send a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. Is that the process you want to follow?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so under new business, agenda item number 15. I'm going to bring up a topic. Is everybody ready? So it has been suggested that the selectmen look at vacation time and automatically rolling over additional days. I've been studying and studying and studying. And Rich, if you want to talk about this, I will be happy to put it on next Monday's agenda. That's all I'm really going to say.
Okay.
You can just tell me if you want to talk about it or not.
Well, the town currently has a policy in place with the union contracts and the Wage and Personnel Board that you're allowed to carry over five days of vacation time, okay?
Yep.
And then under certain circumstances, through the request of the department head with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, then you can request to carry over more vacation time with some sort of reason or justification why you're requesting it. So we certainly can talk about it, but I understand, you know, some of the circumstances that we're in. I do think that if there's a request, we can gladly consider it, okay? But I don't think we should cop last say that everybody's going to carry the vacation time over after July 1. I don't think that's a good idea, a practical idea to do that. So if you want to discuss it at the next meeting, it's fine with me.
Well, I mean, I, I just, I've been, I hadn't heard anything about this and then all of a sudden, my phone kind of blew up with text messages from employees and.
I can give you the guidance that I gave to the department heads and that guidance is the same guidance that it was in December and that unless there is specific reason why people cannot take their vacations, the expectation is that they will take their vacations before the end of the year and in a timely manner, not all, you know, the last two weeks of June or anything like that. But if there was a legitimate reason, like we have asked you not to take your vacation because we need you for this purpose or, you know, if this person does, takes a vacation, it would leave us in a disadvantaged situation with safety, then that is something that we would consider. But that everyone should be taking their vacations accordingly. And that's been my, pretty much, across the line communication to people. But again, you're right, there are certain people that are not going to take their vacation because of what their role is right now with the coronavirus. And those people, yes, I think we should be able to, you know, look at their vacation and roll it over.
I guess, you know, again, I like to stick with the rulebook on certain things and I appreciate every suggestion for, you know, all its merit and for the people that it's trying to help and everything else. But, you know, there's certain people that have been working through this whole crisis who have taken vacation time, even though they couldn't go anywhere. I mean, it's just really, really, really complicated. I will say though, that I have looked at, I know, I believe Rich has too because Clarinda sent out a lot of information on vacation time still on the books. And I really can't see, you know, too many big problems. We don't really have as much vacation time that the five day rollover wouldn't cover. So I, again, I'm a rule kind of girl and I, like Rich, you know, said earlier, the Personnel Handbook is something that's been approved by the union and it's something that we sort of need to live with. So, you know, I'm perfectly content just letting us live with the rulebook. If for some reason, something else comes up, you know me, I'm the first one that'll reconsider anything with legitimate cause. But I think the Personnel Handbook has to stand for, you know, all the bargaining and the work that's gone into it. Anybody else new business?
Do we want to vote to open the warrant and then put a close date on the warrant?
Yes, we need to.
So that's a special town meeting, correct?
Yes.
All right. Wording here.
Vote to schedule a special town meeting for, do you want to do it at 6:30 or 7? And then open the warrant with a closing date.
I'm writing.
I'd say 6:30.
Okay, so the vote is to have a special town meeting?
Oh, well, here's the problem. You haven't. Oh, yeah. I mean, do we want to schedule it, a special town meeting to be held in conjunction with the annual town meeting? With the date of the annual town meeting?
With the date to be determined?
I don't know if that's quite legal.
Yeah, can we vote the date to be determined?
Or we can do it in conjunct, to be held in conjunction with the annual town meeting?
I think that, well, we'll see if it doesn't stand after this meeting, I guess.
I'm sure the legal folks will let us know.
Hey, guys, I have a question for you. But I would vote it just to be in conjunction with or prior to the start of, or however the wording needs to be, special town meeting to be held prior to.
Yes.
The annual town meeting. Yeah.
Whose date is to be determined? At 6:30 P. How about, schedule a special town meeting at 6:30 PM prior to the Lakeville Annual Town Meeting? Date to be determined.
There you go.
What Tracy said.
And the warrant articles for that town meeting will close at, what do we say, May 10? I think you said, Maureen?
Well, if we have a May 11 meeting, the Friday before would be May 8.
Okay, May 8 at 4 o'clock.
And to open the warrant.
Today.
The warrant for the special town meeting.
Yep.
And close the warrant on May 8 at noon.
Noon.
Noon?
Yeah, because, yeah, noon. So you want me to read it back?
Yes, please.
To schedule a special town meeting at 6:30 PM prior to the Lakeville Annual Town Meeting, date to be determined, and open the warrant for the special town meeting and close the warrant on May 8, 2020, at 12 PM.
Okay. Okay. So that's the motion. I make that motion. Do I have to say those words?
No.
Second.
Rich, you are second?
I second it.
Okay. So we will make a vote today, but we will expect clarification on whether we can do...
Yep.
Yeah.
By the time we ratify it, we'll have...
So, just make sure when you tell the legal folks, we said that we knew that we had to get clarification. So two and a half hours is making us silly. All those in favor? Fabian?
LaCamera, aye.
Okay. Any other new business? Anybody? Maureen? Nope. Tracy?
No.
Okay. Agenda Item Number 16. So, under old business, I'm going to turn it over to Rich, because I don't have any other old business, and I know he's working on the next two projects, so we'll see what's up with that.
Okay, as far as an update on the former Lakeville Hospital, you know, as we reported last week, that the company that has purchased the sale agreement on the hospital property is working on some proposed plans, but we have not received those plans. So we don't have an update on that at all. As far as the sale of the Lakeville Country Club, the Board of Assessors are working on the back taxes that would be owed if the country club, you know, is sold. So that information is being presented to them today or tomorrow. And then after that, once they agree to what the amount is, then it'll be up to the Board of Selectmen to decide, you know, whether they want to purchase the property or not. So that's kind of where the status is on that as well. We don't have any additional information on any plans, you know, that are being proposed. Once again, if anybody has any questions of me, you can call the Selectmen's Office at 508-946-8803, and I'll get back to you to try to discuss any questions or concerns that you may have. So that's it.
All right. I don't have any other old business. Anything? What was that?
Got some today.
Okay. Tracy, anything?
No.
All right. So, I do believe, do we have any other business that may properly come before the meeting? As everyone has said, no, and we are not open for public comment. I say there's none of that. So Agenda Item Number 18 is...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before you take a vote for executive session, are there any other items that you guys all set with the FEMA letters regarding the MAPs?
Oh, thank you for bringing that up, Tracy. That's a good point.
Talk about that. All right. Go ahead, Rich, talk about that. I know...
Well, I think Maureen's got more information than I do, but what we need to do is get that article together. We don't have that article for the annual town meeting yet, do we?
We do have it written. I need to pass it by town council.
Okay. So then at the next meeting, once we do that, then we need to refer that article to the planning board, so the planning board can hold a public hearing. So we can do that on May 4th.
Okay.
Thanks, Tracy, for bringing that up.
We should have that answer by them, right, Maureen?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay. So that's, thanks, Tracy, for that. All right. So with that, I make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically the firefighters' union, police union, and laborers' union, and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22, to review potential release of executive session minutes from 2016 to 2019, and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, to comply with the open meeting law. Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22, approval of executive session minutes from December 30th, 2019, February 10th, 2020, at 5:00 PM, February 10th, 2020. That was in the later session, February 13th, 2020, March 23rd, 2020, March 26th, 2020, and April 6th, 2020. If the chair so declares, then the chair declares.
And not to return to open session?
Not to return to open session.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Any discussion before we vote, Rich?
The only thing we have to discuss is that how we get the other people off this...
I sent you meeting notice.
Another one?
Yep.
Okay, I got it.
So all those in favor, and then we will reconvene on the virtual, because it's not to return to open session. So all those in favor, Fabian, aye?
LaCamera, aye.
Okay. All right. Thank you.